Community and everybody struggling to rebuild right now, the lost, people that lost loved ones in Montgomery County as well. All right, now we have special guests from Bransford Elementary School to help us with our pledge of allegiance.
Yeah, Jim, you get where you need to. We need lots of good pictures.
We're gonna line up and face this way first, okay? Then we'll turn around and show everybody how cute you are.
Y'all are pretty good at this, aren't ya? All right, please stand. Y'all are pretty good at this, aren't ya?
Oh, they're awesome.
Yeah. Y'all tell us what to do.
Let's start.
Stankey's pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's turn around. We'd like to thank Ms. Reeves' school, Bransford Elementary. These were students that were nominated by their teachers to be here tonight. So at this time, they're gonna tell us their name. What's your name?
Blomman.
Say it loudly.
Blomman.
Okay.
Howie.
Hyper.
Haley.
Caroline.
Benson.
David.
Samara.
What?
Alex.
Glenn Darian.
Becklin.
Did you say everybody bye?
Good job. Bye-bye. See y'all.
Oh, one's on and he's sweating.
Sweating pants.
Yeah, y'all come up and get pictures. Y'all, y'all do whatever y'all'd like to. One more. Two, three. Thank y'all again. It was great. Dr. Weeks, we should've let them read the mission and vision statement. All right, Dr. Weeks, if you would, read our mission and vision statement.
Our mission is to ensure that each student is prepared to succeed in life, and our vision is that the Robertson County Schools will enable all students to reach and exceed high academic and career standards while empowering them to succeed in a technologically advanced and culturally diverse society.
Thank you. Board members, we have an agenda before us. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
And add these two motions.
Add the winner graduates.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Metra White to approve the agenda with the addition of approving the winner graduates. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Scott Rice. All approved, say aye.
Aye.
Propose nay. Motion passes. Dr. Weeks, item four, staff reports and recommendations.
Board members, first of all, to this evening, we would like to ask our principal from Chrysler Elementary to come forward. Ms. McGlory has a presentation that she would like to honor and recognize an employee that has gone over and beyond what we would normally expect. And I believe it's our goal to make a difference in every student's life every day, and certainly one of our employees has done that. So, Ms. McGlory, we welcome you and thank you for your presentation this evening.
Thank you. On November 15th, I was in my office working, and Nurse Kayla came up, and she had an incident referral, and she said, "I need you to sign this." And I read it, she's right here, I'm sorry. And I looked at her, like, "Wait, what?" And she just was like, "Yeah." So, Ashlyn, you'll come on up here. This is Ashlyn, one of our third graders. He was at lunch, and he got up, he couldn't breathe because he was choking, and first, Ms. Jody, you'll come on up here. Ms. Jody Choate, she's our music teacher, she was in the cafeteria at this time, and she jumped into action while others got the nurse. So between Ms. Jody and Nurse Kayla, who, I want to say, she's our sub-nurse, we love Nurse Snakey, she's our nurse, but we love having a sub that can come in and knows our kids and knows exactly what to do, she knows their families, she just, she fit right in when she came in to sub, so we just want to say thank you. I don't think, we, we often hear a lot of the negative feedback, and I just want you to hear some positive feedback, and so I think it's important to highlight and love at Chrysler, so. And we love the Atwood family. You're a wonderful, wonderful family.
One more.
Well, not happy.
Board members, I would also like to recognize our Assistant Director of Schools, Melanie
Dickerson. Ms. Dickerson has some presentations to make to several of our staff members, and Ms. Dickerson, if you would, please.
Well, this is a special night for our school district. It's an opportunity for us to recognize individuals who go above and beyond. We have great employees in all of our schools, but tonight we're coming together to recognize a few of the top ones in our district, and so I'm gonna ask Ms. Angel Williams to come and Dr. Robach Pruitt to come, and they're gonna recognize our Teachers of the Year for us.
Well, thank you guys for giving us just a couple of minutes to recognize what is the top resource we have in our schools for our students. I'm not an emotional person, but having to sit through Chrysler's recognition kinda got me a little choked up because I know the hard work that our teachers... Recognizing three of Robertson County teachers for Teacher of the Year. We nominate these teachers to go into the Tennessee Teacher of the Year pool. These teachers, this recognition is awarded to teachers who are skilled in implementing research-based and creative teaching strategies, they show evidence of positive teacher effect over time with students, have superior ability to instill in students a love of learning, and are recognized as leaders in their community as well as their school. I'm gonna start with recognizing our pre-K through 5th grade Teacher of the Year. Ms. Sarah Chafin is a 4th grade teacher at East Robertson Elementary School. Ms. Chafin has served as a math leader and is a community and school leader. When talking with Mr. Willoughby, sorry, Dr. Willoughby, at East Robertson Elementary School, he quotes, "Ms. Chafin is a model for what we want in our classroom. She goes above and beyond for all of our students daily. She is a selfless servant for her students and her colleagues. While her student scores are a strong indicator of her effectiveness, her love for our school and community is even more evident. Ms. Chafin's students consistently show more than expected growth." The one thing I can say, there are always reasons to be negative and find ways, things to complain about, but Ms. Chafin comes into school every day with a smile on her face, ready to do what needs to be done for our children. So it is my honor to recognize Ms. Sarah Chafin as Robertson County Teacher of the Year, pre-K through 5th grade.
All right, so I also have middle grades, so I get to recognize a 6th through 8th grade Teacher of the Year. Robertson County's 6th through 8th grade Teacher of the Year is Ms. Mallory Hargett. She is an 8th grade ELA teacher at Cooperstown Middle School. Cooperstown Middle School Principal Amy West believes that Ms. Hargett embodies all the characteristics of Teacher of the Year. Ms. Hargett serves as our literacy leader, which is a full-time classroom teacher who helps train and mentor our ELA teachers in 6th through 8th grade. She also serves on the school leadership team and teaches after-school tutoring. Ms. Hargett's students have consistently scored significantly higher than expected growth. For the past four years, Ms. Hargett has been a Level 5 teacher and even switched grade levels, so that's an incredible task. Please join me in recognizing Ms. Mallory Hargett as Robertson County Teacher of the Year for 6th grade.
If I have a bias, it is probably for high school math people. Just to be transparent about that. Sierra Burden actually began her career with us as a middle school math teacher and then dipped her toes into the high school world by teaching some Algebra I classes. Her administrative team took note that she did that exceedingly well, and she added on the endorsements to become a full-time high school math teacher, which she's done for the last few years. During that time, in her reputation with her students, in her evaluations from her administrators, and also in the scores that she has generated for Heritage High School, she has shown herself to be just an incredibly effective classroom teacher. Beyond that, she is deeply, deeply involved in the heritage community. Dr. Haas said that she is one of the first people you would expect to see at the choir concert, at the band contest. She runs the student council, and join me in praying for her as she is also both the middle and high school cheer sponsor. So, please join me in honoring our high school Teacher of the Year, Ms. Sierra Burden.
All right, now, the second biggest impact on student achievement comes down to our school leaders, our principals. And so, we would like to recognize our Principal of the Year. We have two, one for elementary and one for secondary. This honors reserve for school leaders who demonstrate superior abilities in managing and motivating students and faculties, evoking high standards, demonstrating a commitment to excellence, and having a track record of exceptional gains in student learning. I'm thrilled to be able to introduce the Robertson County Elementary Principal of the Year. Ms. Teresa Chandler is being recognized as Robertson County Principal of the Year. Ms. Chandler is the principal at Cheetum Park Elementary School. She is a strong instructional leader, she is involved in all PLCs with her teachers, she is sitting with them, planning, questioning, making sure that we uphold high standards for all students. She's also very solutions-oriented. She is an advocate for her students and staff members. She is committed to making sure that her school has the resources they need to be successful. When the 2021-2022 school data was released for Cheetah Park, it could've been easy to make excuses for the school about the barriers that we have in that building. Ms. Chandler instead immediately started digging into the data, trying to figure out the why, and to set goals and identify strategies and action steps to improve student outcomes. In one year with Ms. Chandler, Cheetum Park, with Ms. Chandler's leadership, Cheetum Park's growth measure increased from a Level 1 to a Level 5. Through the hard work of her faculty, staff, students, and parents, Cheetum Park has now met the exit criteria for ATSI designation. They are on the road to tremendous achievements as well moving forward. I would like to recognize Ms. Chandler as Robertson County's Principal of the Year.
There are lots of really difficult jobs to go around in the school system, but I want you to think with me for just a moment about the role of a high school principal. You are supervisor and evaluator of a building full of experts in everything from math to language to fine art to business to coding, and are responsible for those folks. You are involved in a full array of theater performances and band contests and choir concerts. You're very much a public figure, and are very, very visible at all of the ballgames for the high school and coping with all of the stresses and all of the worries and all of the emotion that our communities pour into those things. And then at the end of the year, your evaluation is based on your ability to convince a group of 14- to 18-year-olds to come to school, to work hard, to be good, and to take the test seriously so that you can show the work that you've done. Dr. Chris Tucker has done that for us in a couple of different ways in Robertson County. He was assistant principal at White House Heritage High, where he really leaned into academic considerations, even amid the many disciplinary and student-service-y things that tend to consume those things. He opened the new Green Hill High School in Sumner County as assistant principal there, and then returned to us as an assistant at Springfield High, where he has, for the last several years, been the executive principal there. During that time, he has leaned into academics, and I would especially praise him for his work and extra time and support, really trying to make that opportunity available to every student every day to work on our tested subject areas, and I think you can see that focus when you look at the growth scores for Springfield High. So, please join me in congratulating our high school Principal of the Year, Dr. Chris Tucker.
If our principals and CIA would go over for a picture, please, we'll go ahead and get that one done.
our 2024 Supervisor of the Year. These folks that we're recognizing tonight will serve the district for the 23-24 school year, so I just wanted to make that, make that statement. So, this individual brings several adjectives to mind. She is highly energetic, and you need that in a supervisory role. She's very passionate about what she does. She is very, she has extremely high expectations for everyone she works with. She is very student-centered, and one thing that I truly do love about this person is that she has not forgotten what it's like to be a classroom teacher. You know, when you lose sight of that, you've lost a lot of your ability to lead, and so she, she remembers what it's like to get up in front of kids every day and to face those challenges. Besides some of the great things that I can think of to say about this person, there was an email that I received not too long ago about the work that she and her coordinator do for the district, and in that email, it was quite evident that this individual, who is a consultant that works with these, the supervisor, this coordinator, as well as many teachers in our district, she also saw some qualities in this person that kinda sets her to the side. She talked about her, her high level of knowledge in what the work she's doing, how she's so supportive of the academic coaches that she works with, as well as all of the principals that she's assigned to, and let me tell you, she's assigned to a lot of principals. Beyond that, she also is kind of like a boots-on-the-ground kind of person. She not only attends PD sessions, but she also helps to participate and is engaged in what it is she's doing with them. This individual is really special, and it's my pleasure to introduce the 2024 Supervisor of the Year, Ms. Angel Williams. This is a surprise one, because she didn't know it.
I like to win, but I don't want to win.
She's very competitive.
that together for us, and we're so proud of all of our staff, and especially those that we honor tonight. Item five, personnel reports.
Board members, item 5A in your packet, under the purple tab, you'll see the personnel reports for both our certified personnel. You'll see certified personnel actions, there are nine, and you'll see the actions summarized on that page. And in the following page, our classified personnel report. We would like to particularly recognize our three retirees, Karen Peters, Chris Way, and Johnny Wood Jr. from our Transportation Department. You see other personnel actions there, leaves of absence, resignations, hires, transfers, and assignments.
Thank you, sir. Any questions or comments on the personnel reports? Move on to item 6A, expense comparison report.
Item 6A in your packet, under the green tab, provides a summary of revenues and expenditures through October 31st. You'll see in terms of our revenues through the first quarter, we are at 25% of our revenues, which is right on track. Under expenditures, we're at 29% of our budget amount there, and again, you can see the comparisons between 22 and 23. You'll see, again, right at 25, right at 30%. Revenues from property tax are coming in a little bit stronger than last year, $415,000, which is 2% of our budgeted amount, and sales tax coming in at roughly a third of what we've budgeted. So again, a little bit ahead on sales tax, and that is good news, and it sounds like our economy's being positive. The expenditures that we track most closely, those are larger ticket items, our fuels, our electricity, our diesel, our gasoline, and then salaries and insurance, employee benefits. You see those running, everything looks in line. Ms. Kline and I met this morning, discussed financials, and you'll see that everything is in that appropriate neighborhood. We feel very good about those at this point in time. We are gonna watch salaries a little bit closely, so you might want to put a star in your notebooks on salaries. We had, after a week's worth of work, just kinda going over some budgetary numbers, I'm not sure that line item was budgeted high enough last year when the budget was approved, so we're gonna watch it a little carefully as we've looked at projections. Again, I'm learning what we're doing in my office, but also trying to keep track of those expenditures, so we'll watch that carefully as we move through the year and try to make any budget amendments as necessary and transfer dollars where they need to be.
Thank you. Board members, do we have any comments or anything on the expense comparison report? All right, moving on to 6B, approval of...
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Also under 6B, normally, these items are, this is a budget amendment for our general funds, and you'll see it as a balanced budget amendment for $795,370. You will see the fund balance amendments on top, so you'll see the revenue amounts and where they, the sources of those revenue amounts, and then the categories to which they have been charged and assigned. But you see a public school safety grant, and let me go ahead and mention to you that that budget amendment was carried to the County Commission last week because they had the Budget Committee, so the Budget Committee has already reviewed that because we had some expenditures that were tied to that budget amendment that will be pending your action tonight, so that those expenditures associated with the public school safety grant could go ahead and go through. There's some POs associated with that. So, County Commission Budget, Budget Committee has approved that, and they'll be carrying that to full County Commission just for that particular grant. But that 462-824 for public school safety, you'll see the other grants, the preschool grant, ROTC supplies, insurance recoveries, and McDonald's is kind enough, we'll recognize them for their contributions during the first quarter of the year. If you purchase, side order fries from McDonald's, you received, we received a donation out of that and another miscellaneous revenue. So, again, we'd present that to you for your approval with the indication that the 462-824 has already gone to County Commission Budget.
Thank you. Board members, what's your pleasure for approval of the general funds budget amendment?
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Jeff White, second by Mr. Scott Rice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right. Item 7A, under administration, approval of school board policies on first reading.
Ms. Dickerson, if you would, present those, please.
Three policies are being presented for approval in the first reading. The first policy is 1.105, School Board Legislative Involvement. A change in the title of the individual charged with keeping the board informed of legislative changes has been revised from Legislative Representative to Legislative Liaison. So that was just a recommendation from TSB. Any questions? Second policy, 1.701, School District Planning. As part of the legislation enacting the state's new funding formula, districts are required to submit TESA accountability reports. Language in the model policy reflects the need for information in these reports to align with the board's strategic plan and schools' improvement plans. Do you have any questions about that one? And the final one is 4.603, Promotion and Retention. A recent change to state law created another pathway for 3rd grade students to be promoted to 4th grade. If a student scores within the 50th percentile on the most recently administered state-provided benchmark assessment, the student may be promoted to 4th grade so long as they also received tutoring services for that year. This statutory change also requires the State Board of Education to develop, to develop rules on an appeals process. We anticipate additional updates to the policy based on the State Board action. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Ms. Scott. Board members, what's your pleasure with these three board policies as presented?
Motion to approve on first reading.
Motion by Ms. Connie Hogan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Josh White. All in favor, say aye. action tonight, so that those expenditures associated with the public school safety grant could go ahead and go through. There's some POs associated with that. So county commission budget, budget committee has approved that, and they'll be carrying that to full county commission just for that particular grant. But that 462-824 for public school safety, you'll see the other grants, preschool grant, ROTC supplies, insurance recoveries, and McDonald's was kind enough, we'll recognize them for their contributions during the first quarter of the year. If you purchase, side order of fries from McDonald's, you received, we received a donation out of that and another miscellaneous revenue. So again, we'd present that to you for your approval with the indication that the 462-824 has already gone to county commission budget.
Thank you, board members. What's your pleasure for approval of general funds budget amendment?
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Jeff White, second by Mr. Scott Rice. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes. All right. Item 7A, and under administration, approval of school board policies on first reading.
Ms. Dickerson, if you would, present those, please.
Three policies are being presented for approval in the first reading. The first policy is 1.105, school board legislative involvement. A change in the title of the individual charged with keeping the board informed of legislative changes has been revised from legislative representative to legislative liaison. So that was just a recommendation from TSB. Any questions? Second policy, 1.701, school district planning. As part of the legislation enacting the state's new funding formula, districts are required to submit TESA accountability reports. Language in the model policy reflects the need for information in these reports to align with the board's strategic plan and schools' improvement plans. Do you have any questions about that one? And the final one is 4.603, promotion and retention. A recent change to state law created another pathway for third-grade students to be promoted to fourth grade. If a student scores within the 50th percentile on the most recently administered state-provided benchmark assessment, the student may be promoted to fourth grade so long as they also received tutoring services for that year. This statutory change also requires the State Board of Education to develop rules on an appeals process. We anticipate additional updates to the policy based on the state board action. Are there any questions?
All right, thank you, Ms. Melanie. Board members, what's your pleasure with these three board policies as presented?
Motion to approve on first reading.
Motion by Ms. Connie Hogan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Josh White. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. And do we have anything under transportation and facilities tonight? Right? And item nine, director of schools report.
Board members, again, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve this district. It's been a pleasure to be here officially, I think, a week and a day. During that point in time, I've seen several faces, and we've had opportunity, today we finished our ninth visit to schools and had an opportunity to, I think these are unofficial visits, we've not sat down behind closed doors with any principals or assistant principals, but we've been welcomed and shown around not only the schools and stepped into several classrooms, but we've also been in cafeterias, we've been in gymnasiums, we've been in band rooms. Somebody mentioned earlier holiday concerts and athletic events and things like that. We're getting our feet wet doing those things as well, so trying to get out and just see people that I've known and meet new faces and meet new people. That's been a true pleasure, and I'm thankful for the opportunity to do that. During that point in time, we've also met with three of our large supervisor groups. We met with supervisors, and we discussed staff expectations, high expectations that we have. We discussed personal and professional expectations, so we've had that meeting. We also met with coordinators, had those conversations with them, and we also met with support staff here in this office. So we had three large group meetings and enjoyed those. We are having a principals' meeting tomorrow and looking forward to meeting all of our principals together at one time and having some discussion there while we also have some training. We'll say it's, just in those few short days, I've been impressed by the staff and how they have again reached out, particularly during the time of crisis, to serve our community, and I know you have a lot to be proud of, as we all do. So we're very thankful for that. Board members, you have received a communication from me and our attorney, Sam Jackson, about an opportunity for a board retreat the last weekend of January. So I guess, Mr. Harris, we do need to take an official action, I suppose, to create that position and advertise that as a work session. Mr. Jackson has offered his office for us that day, and again, Friday night and a Saturday, I think, is what we had talked about, so we would need to advertise that appropriately to do that. And then, lastly, again, just thankful for the opportunity to be here and to serve and looking forward to just continuing leadership as we look at that. Last thing we would share with you, I know there was some discussion at, to the last board meeting or a couple of board meetings ago, there was discussion about the position of an operational direct, assistant director of schools, so we'd like to pass a sample job description around for you so that you have some time to review that and talk about that position. And again, be glad to answer any questions related to that, if you have those and those might come up. And then finally, again, just looking forward to serving in any way possible. I think that this is a very good school system, and we're looking forward to working. Told staff I don't have any magic pills, don't have any magic potions, we don't have any magic programs. It's just coming in and working as hard as we can, establishing those expectations. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to work here and to serve you, serve this community, and serve alongside with this staff and with our principals. Somebody mentioned earlier, no matter what we leave in this room, no matter what happens at our offices across the hall, I fully believe in what happens between those teachers in their classrooms, what happens with bus drivers as students enter the buses, I believe it's what happens when our cafeteria staff serves students. And we talked a lot the other day that our jobs here are to add value to those employees and remove barriers from those families and the barriers that would stop students from learning. So you will hear more about that later.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, board members, do we have any old business to come before the board tonight? All right, we'll move on to new business.
I've got one item.
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we allow Trane to begin the design process on the HVAC renovation and, I guess, re, I guess renovation is the best way to put it, at Robert F. Woodall, effective on our vote.
Okay, all right. We have a motion from Mr. Josh White to approve Trane to begin the design process for renovating the HVAC at Robert F. Woodall. Do we have a second?
Second by Mr. Jeff White. Any discussion?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. And I guess new business is as good a time as any to, do we need a vote to schedule the retreat so we can advertise that as a public meeting? The dates we have are January 26th and 27th for the retreat, and we can fill in the details later about times and locations. Does that work for the board? I know we've had some emails about it.
My only thing is, I guess I'm telling them, I ain't lost a thing in Nashville, and I really don't care to go there myself, I'm trying to keep it more local. I don't, I'll do whatever the board wants to do, but I appreciate Mr. Jackson offering that, you know, said, but we can get a lot done here, too.
Yeah, okay. Can we do a motion for the dates?
Motion to approve the dates. January 26th and 27th.
Yes, sir. All right, so a motion by Mr. Scott Rice to approve January 26th and 27th for a board retreat. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Demetriya White. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, any other new business to come before the board at this time? All right, we'll move on to comments. My board members, Mr. Rice?
Dr. Weeks, welcome, and...
Thank you, sir.
As a board member, I'm assuming your honeymoon period's over and it's time, you know, everything's good. Another word, no, we welcome you and we're excited, look forward to the future and what you bring to Robertson County schools. As we get ready for break, I'd like to say thank you to all the teachers and staff. It's, you know, Christmas break is a good, long break to refresh and remember what's important to us, you know, the tornado taught us that to be short, and we never know, so just, you know, love the ones around you and tell them, and we're glad you guys are here and be safe over the holidays.
Ms. Connie?
Okay, you're gonna find out, they laugh at me because I always have something to say, but anyway, this has been a great night because it has highlighted so many things that are so important in Robertson County schools, some very positive things. When you start out with those children from Bransford, what else, I mean, you look at that and you think, that's why we do what we do. I've told the board before, Dr. Weeks, that, you know, if things are kind of going crazy and I feel like I need some inspiration, I go to Bransford. I mean, that's what it's all about to me. Welcome to you, I'm very excited. I am looking forward to sitting down and going over some goals and making a plan that will be the best thing for the students in Robertson County, because that's what we're all about. You know, I could tell some things about these two principals that are in here because I have a real good relationship with them. I do want, and Dr. Tucker might get me for saying this, but, you know, he sometimes is the crossing guard in the traffic, you know, and I think to myself, you know, he should find somebody else to do that. But, and I'm gonna tell this on him, too, he made the comment to me when I said that one time to him, he said, "I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna ask anybody else to do anything that I'm not willing to do." That says a lot about a leader of a school. You know, Ms. Chandler, I love her dearly, I don't, when you talk about the school improvement plans that these people had put together, you need to look at hers. It was amazing to me. So anyway, I think we've got some great things going on, and can you tell, I really like Robertson County schools. I'll just end with, I hope everybody has a great Christmas break.
Thank you. All right, Josh?
I think, first of all, I'd like to congratulate all the educators of the year that were just listed. Mr. Bellis, I hope you were able to get Dr. Tucker's sneakers in the picture, because those are awesome. But, you know, also, Dr. Weeks, welcome, I look forward to getting to know you better and working with you. You know, I like to look for kind of silver linings and stuff like that after a weekend like this weekend with the storms and, just to brag on our community a little bit, it was pretty sober and driving through Springfield into, you know, central office this afternoon as I was on my way in and just to kind of see the damage, but, you know, I thought back to Sunday morning when my social media news feeds were flooded with folks saying, "If you need to borrow a chainsaw, if you need a generator, if you need food, if you need to take a shower, if you need to charge your phone," just this outpouring of people willing to help those that were impacted just really speaks to the character of our county as a whole and just really proud to call it home. Just look forward to you guys getting a much deserved break for a little while over Christmas, hope everybody has a good one.
Jeff?
Going to the tornado, teachers, if you know anyone affected personally, you can give them Mr. Gregory or call me, there will be cleaning supplies and things like that brought to Hillcrest Church of Christ, and it's for these people who have been affected by the tornado from the churches of Christ disaster relief folks in Nashville. So we got a truckload of stuff out there just waiting for people to ask for it, and if we have to deliver it, we can, or they can come pick it up, either one. I'm ready for Christmas. Well, it was a good night. If you look straight ahead, that's the newest NIL deal for principals.
We'll take it.
Thomas, I wish you could zoom in on those. No, I hope everybody has a wonderful Christmas, love the people who you're with, and I don't have anything else.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Demetri?
Well, I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. It's kind of, it comes so fast, but, Dr. Weeks, this was a great first meeting, we're just so glad to have you here. And I'm really excited about our planning session, too, and there's just a lot of good things going on, and so I'm honored to be a part of that. And congratulations to all the well-deserving principals and teachers and supervisor, and so anyway, we've got, it's kind of like Thanksgiving, we've got a lot to be thankful for here. So Merry Christmas to everybody.
Thank you. And, Dr. Weeks?
Where's Mr. Heinemann at?
Oh, yeah.
I know.
See you there. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, appreciate it. Well, I just want to echo, Dr. Weeks, welcome. We're glad to have you. I hope every meeting can be as good as this one and as fun as this one, but it probably won't be. But we, tonight was a good highlight of all the good stuff we've got going on. If we could start every meeting with preschoolers leading the pledge, that puts us off on a good foot, anyway. This weekend did highlight, and then our planning session night was all about our student services, how the district goes above and beyond for our students in so many different ways, seeing all they're doing for Christmas for these kids, just to make Christmas morning special for kids they wouldn't be. That's amazing, and they do this work all year long, and I'm so proud of that, and it was good to hear from them. Teresa, thank you for having your crew here with us tonight. But that's, that stuff goes on behind the scenes, and people have no idea that we're helping our students' families find housing and food and Christmas and all that stuff, and I just, I absolutely love it, that's how we do in Robertson County, and even after a weekend like this, like Josh said, you saw the outpourings of support, we're still blessed to be in Robertson County. And I believe that, anytime I walk into school and get to visit with our kids, like Ms. Connie said, that's the best way to recharge your batteries. I know teachers don't feel like that, they're there too much. But for us, when you get bogged down in all this stuff, going and visiting our kids, you get hope for the future and you're ready to go. But I want to thank y'all, everybody, thank y'all for all the work, get ready for the meeting. Dr. Weeks, do you have anything before we go?
Last thing, I'd just like to recognize a special friend and a former Robertson County board member that's here tonight, Ron Vargazzi and Ms. Wendy that are here in the audience. So thank you, guys, for joining us tonight.
Right. All right, board members, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So adjourn?
All right, I'm just gonna take them off. There we go, all right. Stand attorney. Ms. Beverly can pick out.